And welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Hearing. At this point, Edwin Marshall is going to outline general information about how the remote public hearing will be held and how to participate in it.
Thank you Chair Lago. Good morning Commissioners. Good morning all. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage Portal or by calling on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you are accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip participation ID. The password is the normal one. The phone number is also posted on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please know that whether you are accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Those accessing the meeting online will have the option to turn on their camera while giving testimony. We are testing this on a trial basis. When it's your turn to speak, you will be notified and promoted to a panelist. This will allow you to unmute your microphone and the ability to turn on your camera. Please listen closely for your name to be called. There will be a short period where it will appear that you are no longer in the meeting. Do not be alarmed. You should rejoin the meeting as a panelist. Please note that promoting speakers takes a little longer, so please be patient. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from the list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. For those listening to the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide that they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the here via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It is not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Speakers are limited to three minutes of testimony. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If consecutive translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, and if an applicant team wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of ten minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing, all testimony provided, is being recorded.
Thank you Edwin. And with that, Madam Secretary, please begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. I will now call the role Chair Lago. Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo. Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Evie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Otis. Commissioner Rampachat.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, April 21st, 2021.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
The next part of the calendar is the reports section on page one. Reports Borough of the Bronx. Calendar numbers one and two. CD1, calendar number one, C210154H8X. Calendar number two, C210155HUX. In the matter of application for UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Melrose Open Door CD1. For favorable reports on calendar numbers one and two. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, I'm particularly excited about the use of the community land trust model here and the cooperative format for the various buildings. Um, I really commend HPD and the applicant for pursuing this course for these sites and look forward to seeing how it works out and hope that it can be applied in many other places across the city. We certainly need these kinds of opportunities for homeownership. I vote yes.
Commissioner Marin.
I would echo the comments made by Chair Levin, excuse me, Commissioner Levin. We do, um, it is exciting to have these properties placed on a CLT assuring permanent affordability and stewardship by the CLT, so I vote yes.
Commissioner Otis. Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers one and two. Borough of the Bronx, calendar number three, CD3, C210156H8X. In the matter of an application for a UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Melrose Open Door CD3. For a favorable report on calendar number three. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number three. Borough of, excuse me, Borough of the Bronx, calendar number four, CD10, C210149ZMX. In the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning Crab Chanty Restaurant. For a favorable report on calendar number four. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Barney.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number four. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers five and six, CD9. Calendar number five, C190118ZMX. Calendar number six, N210096CRX. In the matter of application for zoning map amendment, for zoning map amendments concerning 909 Castle Hill Avenue rezoning. For favorable reports on calendar number five and six. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar number five and six. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number seven, CD13, C200298ZSK. In the matter of an application for the grant of a special permit concerning West 16th Street. For a favorable report on calendar number, calendar number seven. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number seven. Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number eight, CD3, C210173H8K. In the matter of an application for UDOT designation, project approval and disposition of city-owned property concerning Bed-Stuy Central and North-North-Neyheim Cluster. For a favorable report on calendar number eight. Chair Lago.
Yes, and I'll note that Commissioner Rampachat is recused.
Okay. Um, Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat is recused.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number eight. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number nine, CD3, N210211RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 325 Woodvale Avenue. For adoption on calendar number nine. Chair Lago.
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachat.
Yes.
Calendar number nine has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page nine. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 10, CD1, C200352ZSM. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a grant of special permit concerning 314 West 43rd Street.
There's going to be a team presentation by sorry for the technical difficulty. There will be a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Gary Handel, Max Stember Young, Penny Knops, Lee Whitman, and Melanie Myers.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Lee Whitman. I am a land use attorney with Fried Frank, Harris Schreiber, and Jacobson, and I am representing 311 West 42nd Street Associates, which is an affiliate of Taconic and the applicant for this project. The applicant is seeking a special permit pursuant to Section 96104 of the zoning resolution to allow for an approximately 22-foot increase in height for a portion of the project along West 43rd Street. The project will span three zoning districts. Firstly, a portion of the project will be located within a C62 district and in the preservation area of the Special Quinton District. Within this area, the height of the proposed building is limited to 66 feet, and the portion of the project that is within this area is the subject of the special permit that we are seeking today. The remainder of the site is within a C64 district, a portion of which is within the 42nd Street perimeter area of the Special Quinton District, and a portion of which is within the 8th Avenue perimeter area of the Special Quinton District and within the 8th Avenue corridor of the Theater Sub District in the Special Midtown District. These areas allow for additional height, and portions of the proposed buildings located within these areas will comply with the underlying regulations. So no waivers are sought within these areas. The project is located at the very edge of the preservation area and on a street that is characterized by buildings with a variety of heights, including an approximately 193-foot tall building which is located on the project site itself. So we believe that this is an appropriate location to seek a special permit for additional height. Today, we will begin by presenting our proposal, and then we will conclude by discussing the feedback we've received throughout the public review process and the steps that we've taken in response to that feedback. So with that being said, I will turn it over now to Gary Handel, who will present the project.
Thank you, Lee. And next slide, please. Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm pleased to bring this project in front of you. Here you can see the subject site outlined in red, located between 42nd and 43rd Street, 8th and 9th Avenue. In the lower-left corner, you can see as Lee outlined, the three different zoning districts that the project is within. The one in the upper-left is the Preservation Sub District, which is the subject of the application. The through-block one is the midtown one, which is what generates the pedestrian circulation space, which we'll talk about as well. Go next. Here you can see some views of the site. First, on the upper trench from 43rd Street, first with our back towards 8th Avenue, looking at the existing building on the site, and then moving to the center, looking directly to the south, seeing the through-block parking lot, which will be replaced by the new building. And then with our back towards 9th Avenue, again, looking at the existing building to be demolished, as well as the surface parking lot. On the bottom, moving to 42nd Street with a back towards 9th Avenue. Again, with these four views, then looking at the surface parking lot towards the existing building which fronts onto 43rd Street. Next, please. Here you can see the cutaway view through 43rd Street from 8th Avenue on the left and 9th Avenue on the right, showing the existing condition. You can see the existing 1199 building on the left, which will be demolished, as well as the through-block parking lot going through to 42nd Street. You can also see the character of the buildings on this, on the street. And go next, please. Our proposal is to demolish that existing building, which goes to 192 feet, and to replace it with a smaller structure rising to 88 feet four inches with a break and with our material articulation at the 66-foot datum established by the underlying zoning. So here we have the unique ability to actually demolish a much larger building and replace the scar created by the existing surface parking lot with a building that we feel is much more contextually appropriate. You can see in the upper-right-hand portion, an axonometric about that healing gesture of really creating a continuous street wall along 43rd Street. The building in the background is the tower portion of our site, which aligns with the taller buildings that line 42nd Street. And go next. And here you can see the reconfigured, the site, you know, basically with our building fitting in more contextually, with several other buildings that, including our immediate neighbor across the street, which still rises to the 192 feet. And then the building on the corner of 43rd and 9th, which had been the subject of a previous special permit, which rises to the 99 height allowed under that special permit. And go next. And then here you can see our proposal. The building on 43rd Street is the subject of the special permit. We've indicated the 66-foot height datum, the two additional floors that rise, the additional 22 feet as Lee mentioned, our rear yard equivalent, and then our tower portion that fronts onto 42nd Street. And go next. And here we have a view of the project, looking to down 43rd Street, and you can see the building mass confronting on that with the two datum heights, the 66-foot height on the right, and then stepping up to the 88-foot height, which roughly aligns with the buildings that front onto 8th Avenue. And then you can see the pedestrian circulation space immediately to the left of that, which has been opened up in order to create greater transparency to that, to that space. Next. And then a detailed view of that space, you know, showing how we have opened that up, really trying to create a more friendly facade on that, under the control of the concierge, which will be inside, a door that leads into our vestibule, and then lighting that has been incorporated in order to increase public safety. We've removed some plantings and other things at the suggestion of Community Board Four in order to increase the safety of the space. And with that, I'll turn this over and go next, and I'll turn it over to Penny Knops.
Morning. It's a pleasure to speak with you all, and thank you for your time. We're really pleased to present this project to the Commission and to have received the support of both Community Board Four and the Borough President. I would like to take this time now to respond to some of the comments and conditions the project has received during our outreach meetings. First, we can confirm the team is finalizing the residential planning of the development. We've initiated discussions with the HPD, and we'll be returning to the Community Board within the next two weeks to present both the affordable housing plan as well as the proposed on- and off-site tree planting strategies. And second, in response to the pedestrian recess, which you can see here, located at the northeast portion of the 43rd Street facade, we want to take the opportunity to really express that we are in alignment with the Community Board and the Borough President on their issues and concerns, you know, that they've expressed. So in addition to removing all the planters from the area, the incorporation of additional lighting, and the increased transparency between the lobby and the sidewalk at this location, we can confirm the lobby will be attended 24 hours. And we will be incorporating security cameras, not only at this location, but along the entire 43rd Street facade. And finally, we've kind of come to really view this zoning requirement as an opportunity to really consider the space in our response to the request by the community for a commemoration of sorts of the former headquarters of the 1199 SEIU. So we believe it's an appropriate use of the recess, and we'll be collaborating directly with the 1199 as we finalize our concept in the next coming few weeks. And following that, we look forward to presenting that design and concept to the Community Board, hopefully around early June, and moving that, those discussions forward. So with that, we thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Then questions from the Commission. Not seeing any. I will then thank the applicant team. Oh, Commissioner Bernie.
Sorry. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I mean, this is interesting that you're actually asking to demolish a taller building in order to build a smaller building. I'm wondering if this is a precedent that we might see coming in the future. I don't know. But there is a big tower on 42nd Street. And my only question really is, I don't see any ground floor plans. And I'm wondering how these two structures interface with the street, what the ground floor uses are. I think on 43rd, it's primarily residential. Is that also true on 42nd? Or is there any commercial component in either of these buildings?
So the, so it's a through-block site, you know, and so the buildings will share a lobby which will be entered off of 43rd Street and then actually head south, you know. It's actually quite a nice space. We're excited about it to connect into both the elevator lobbies for the 43rd Street building and the 42nd Street building. There will be retail both on 43rd Street and 42nd Street. The frontage along 42nd Street will be pretty much exclusively retail with some service entrances and stairs and things like, like that.
Okay. Terrific, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I will thank the applicant team. And our next speaker will be Pierce Healy.
He is in the room.
Oh, yes, hello.
Yes. You may start when ready.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Edwin, is Mr. Healy unmuted?
He hung up. It appears that Madam Chair, he hung up.
Okay. We won't take that personally. And we do not appear to have any other speakers signed up. Would you be able to check, Edwin, if anyone registered in the prior few moments?
Will you get right down, Madam Chair? We have no, we have no, no other speakers on this item.
Okay, then the public hearing is closed. And I would ask if we have any other matters before the Commission?
No, Madam Chair, there is no other business before the Commission, but I do have some public information. For those of you who were unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal through DCP's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st Floor, New York, New York, 10271. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Edwin, you have an announcement?
Uh, yes, I do. And thank you, Madam Chair. Before we begin our special review session today, Commissioners, I do have an announcement. Before our presentation, I'd like to state for the record that the revised disposition from Monday's review session for the referral of the Citywide Hotels text amendment should reflect that this project will be referred for 60 days to all Community Boards, Borough Boards, and Borough Presidents.
I'm afraid that we had a typo, and so the referral period, it will be our standard lengthier 60-day period. Um, I think with that, the public hearing is closed, and I think we will now move into a special review session.
Uh, yes, we will. Yes, we will. Thank you, Chair Lago. And again, good afternoon, good morning Commissioners, and good morning all. Welcome to the City Planning Commission's Special Review Session for Wednesday, May 5th, 2021. The time is 10:30, and a quorum is present. The first and only item on our agenda today is a presentation from the Department of Design and Construction and the BBJ Project Team, who will provide a BBJ program update and awarded design overview for the Queens Garage and Community Space.
Before turning it over to the DDC team, I'll just note that this is one of a series of presentations that will be made to the Commission as the BBJ, the Borough Based Jails Initiative goes forward. And in addition to welcoming our colleagues from DDC, Mock J Corrections, we're also have, we also are joined by Eric Gregory, the Department of, the Department of City Planning's Chief Urban Designer, and Eugenia Di Girolamo, who is a senior urban designer. The two of them have been working on this initiative from the outset. So over to you, Rebecca.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rebecca Cliff. I'm the Associate Commissioner for the Borough Based Jails Program for the Department of Design and Construction. And I'd like to present the first portion of our presentation today of the Queens Garage. It's a really scary picture of me there. Background. All right, so the first part of today's presentation will be related to the, well, the only part, the Queens Garage and Community Space. Next slide, please. The program, the agenda for today, we'll go over the program and the goal summary, the timeline, design goals, how we've interacted and engaged with the community at various levels. And then the design-build team of Hunter Roberts Construction Group will present their plans for the garage and the community space. Next slide. Next. Okay, so as you probably recall, that the program is to replace 11 active jails in the city. the program is to replace eleven active jails in the city correctional system with smaller, safer, fairer system that will be greatly reduced to about thirty three hundred people, which requires about three thousand five hundred and forty four beds. They'll be split between four borough based sites. The Manhattan, Queens and Brooklyn adjacent to and on the existing building site, which will be demolished and then reconstructed with new facilities and a site in the Bronx. The housing of in each facility will be based on where the person in custody resides. And the main focus of these facilities is reentry and support services. And by enhancing staff support wellness spaces, including gym, staff lounge, outdoor space and quiet spaces, we hope to create a more normalized setting for better experience. Next, please. The program timeline has has hit a few bumps with the pandemic and such. Right now, we are in the early phases. We've just awarded the parking garage for Queens, replacing which is the first early work that will replace the parking on onsite parking with a six hundred space garage. Concurrent with this procurement, we have procurements ongoing for the dismantle of Queens, Bronx, Brooklyn and Manhattan. Those design builders were in third or fourth CDM for each and we're expecting their proposals to be coming in June, July, August. Next, please. The program design goals were developed through interaction with the community and CPC, DCP, the Public Design Commission, DDC and the sponsor agencies and developed into supportive environments to provide normal to environments that foster safety, autonomy and wellbeing. We want these to be civic assets that exemplify outstanding architecture that's well integrated with the fabric of the existing neighborhoods, which are quite varied in the four sites. We want to connect communities with the facilities to help support the people in custody. And we want them to be an enduring resource that will be continuing to perform optimally beyond their fifty year lifecycle. Next, please. The ULR parameters as established through the process was to construct a maximum of six hundred and seventy six public spaces on a maximum of two hundred and two thousand eight hundred square foot over the entire site, which is bounded by Union Turnpike, one hundred and twenty sixth street, one hundred and thirty second and the existing criminal court building in Queens. There's a ten foot setback along one hundred and twenty sixth street and above the hundred and five mark. Excuse me, above the hundred and five mark, there's a ten foot setback. The community space frontage and access along one hundred and twenty sixth street requires thirty feet in depth for seventy five percent of each designated frontage. The garage access points will be on one hundred and twenty sixth and one hundred and thirty second street. Next, please. The the goal of this project or some of the goals to activate the ground floor to the extent possible to minimize interference of the vehicular entrance with pedestrian flow along one hundred and twenty sixth and one hundred and thirty second street to strive for ground floor divot design that that feels active and enriches the pedestrian experience to create visual interest by using screening, art planting and or architectural and structural details to enhance the building. Consider the separation between the ground floor and the rest of the building through a setback or other architectural features. And to consider advancing sustainability goals with roof features like cool or green roof PV panels, et cetera. Next, please. So at at this point, I'd like to to discuss a little bit. We have done extensive engagement with and outreach with the communities through MACHJ, DOC ourselves. We've held more than thirty meetings with the neighborhood advisory committees that were set up as part of the ULR process. We have had twenty five meetings at least with the community boards in the various boroughs, including recently, we've presented the Queens Garage project to the local community board. The community design workshop, we've held three workshops in spite of the pandemic online and they've been quite successful. The Justice Implementation Task Force has continued to provide input. The Justice Advocates Group of formerly incarcerated individuals has also participated in two workshops and more than twenty meetings. We have had workshops with DOC and CHS staff to get their employees input on the design and program as well as meetings with numerous elected official city council congress, district attorneys, borough presidents, et cetera. Next, please. These reports from resulting from these committees and hearings, workshops, et cetera, have all been posted on the website, rikers dot city of new york dot US backslash and they can be viewed there. They're somewhat interesting and and some of them counterintuitive to what we thought we would find and very informative to the program and the process. Next, please. So we we held a an outreach in February of twenty twenty, just prior to the outbreak of the pandemic. And the community members, while they were not, there were not a lot of them, they were very eager to participate and give their comments on the various information and situations. They favored accessible open space, creative lighting and natural light to the facilities and in generally a concern for the people in custody and their ability to have access to daylight. The ideas for the community facilities, this has come up again and again, but DDC is looking to MACHJ, City Hall to assist in determining with the community what the use of the community space is. We are providing a white box space so that whatever the eventual choices that of what goes in there, it'll be easy to to fit out and and have a wonderful space. So at this point, I'd like to move to the next slide and introduce Joshua Frankel from the Hunter Roberts Construction Group, who is the design build team for the development and construction of the garage. Thank you very much. Scott, Joshua?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, good. Great. Thank you. It's it's wonderful to be here. Sorry, I'm on my cell phone. I'm having a little technical issue. Really, I'm just here to, as part of the design build team, this is a unique project that's designed builds. And I'm really here to introduce Scott Demille, who will be doing the presentation of our design from Marvel Architects. He is here along with Don Henry from Urban Architects. We're excited to be here. We, when we assembled this design team, we did it in part because of the the we understood the civic importance of this building and its role in the overall program. And and so we put a team together that really has a long history of delivering projects that are sensitive to their urban context. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Scott.
Great. Thank you, Josh. Good morning, everyone. Can we go to the next slide, please? Great, thank you. Good morning again. So our our site location is within the Queens Municipal District. It's outlined in red here towards the eastern side of the site, kind of at the corner of Union Turnpike and the Van Wick, bounded by one hundred and thirty second street and one hundred and twenty sixth street. There is an existing surface parking lot that exists that takes up the entirety of the of the block now. And the site that we will be working on for this project is the northern approximately one third of that that location. Next slide. The project is is delivering a new parking facility and also a community space. And also the project will be modifying the existing surface parking lot as well. Next slide. Speaking for the whole of the design, the project team, and as Josh suggested in the introduction, we understand the importance of this municipal location. This project we see is an opportunity to realize the eastern portion of this municipal grouping of of buildings, activating what could have been considered as kind of the back of the site at one time, behind Borough Hall and behind the Queens County Criminal Courthouse. However, this project's intent is to look forward to to the future and look for future opportunities of of connectivity. The recently completed Helen Marshall Cultural Center began to face some of the civic resources onto the eastern portion of this of this district out to the park space that's behind Borough Hall. And this project extends that same attitude of broader connections between itself, the pedestrian bridge and other connections extending towards Queens Boulevard. Next slide, please. The approach for the building breaks the building into two key components. The bulk of the parking garage is placed towards the eastern side of the site, towards one hundred and thirty second street. It's aligned with that street and facing towards the highway. The garage itself is made as efficient and as small as possible by using slope parking decks that combine both circulation and parking spaces, maximizing the parking efficiency per square foot of of construction and minimizing the footprint of that portion of the building. The community space is aligned with one hundred and twenty sixth street adjacent to, but independent from the parking. These are two independent structures, two different framing systems, each with isolation from from one another for noise and vibration and other distractions that may occur with a parking garage next to that community space. The community space is also lower in scale. It's more closely aligned with the open park-like space that faces towards Borough Hall and of course Borough Hall itself, which is a three story building. The intent is for the community space to create its own presence separate from the garage, not just a frontage or storefront within a much larger, larger building. Next slide, please. The proposal also incorporates landscape and natural elements upon the design, creating continuity with the adjacent park space and sustainable natural elements upon the project at tactile, visible locations such as walkways, terraces and roofs. This idea can also be carried to the future plaza and the buffer, not unlike the gardens and planted street streetscapes that are in the adjacent neighborhood. Those stairs that are in this diagram that are introduced to the building also allow immediate access into the facility and to the garage. Next slide. They also provide visual markers for circulation across the community space and into the main vertical circulation core of the garage itself. These are visible, visible orientation markers that emphasize active design and movement at these sculpted outdoor areas. They thread together multiple movement paths with overlaps of experience. And the arrangement allows visitors to learn and engage with the activities and offerings that would happen in the future community space when that's fitted out by a future tenant. And it also gives orientation, looking out over the municipal center when leaving the garage and provides for a clear marker for returning at the end of the day and returning to one's vehicle. For connecting to the district, pedestrian flow is not just considered at the face of the building, but drawn into and across the site. Building setbacks create pockets of interest and entrances take advantage of the suggested plaza and thirty foot buffer, activating that pass through adjacent to the site and from one hundred and thirty second street and the pedestrian bridge, it's just off to the right of this diagram. Part of the project proposal is to continually adapt to various scales of interaction from the scale of pedestrian interface and the existing streetscape and park trees, the lower scale community space, leading to the much larger parking garage structure and its eastern facade facing towards the highway interchange. Next slide. In terms of circulation for the project delivery, vehicular and pedestrian circulation is divided into two distinct and separate locations. Vehicles are entering at opposite corners of the garage on on the two streets, on one hundred and thirty second street at the top right and one twenty sixth on the bottom left. Separate corner of the building face is for dedicated, separate pedestrian entry coming into the community space or into the garage itself. Circulation can continue along the exterior stairs that are integrated with the building, which are shown at the inset on the right hand side, extending up to the second level and actually up to an upper level of the parking garage as well. And the community center frontage, which is shown at this level, meets the hundred and forty foot minimum requirement. Now, there's multiple pedestrian entry points that are possible at this grade level at one hundred and twenty sixth street across the plaza space and the buffer, but also extending into the building into the midpoint of buffer space for a future potential connection into the garage that could be used in the future if vehicle modes change for additional bicycle parking, personal mobility devices such as scooters or other elements, the parking garage could actually be restripped and accommodate those mobility options coming into the garage separate from the vehicles on one hundred and twenty sixth street and one hundred and thirty second street. Next slide, please. Once fully realized as part of the adjacent development, the plaza and the buffer are actually integral to the pedestrian movement at those multiple entry points. The pedestrian walkway is fully activated as a pass through and it can be a connector to that core of municipal district. The study that we've provided is just an example, testing the feasibility of how that could work with the continual grade from one hundred and twenty sixth street extending to the midpoint of the buffer and then descending down towards one hundred and thirty sixth street with a variety of stairs and ramps. Next slide, please. The existing civic buildings have a variety of scales and construction types. Borough Hall, which is built in nineteen forty, is a lower three story building. It has distinct vertical stone and cast stone elements at this entry and also at the side wings, which you'll see in a future photo. And also the Queens Criminal Courthouse built in nineteen fifty six and later extended. The body of the building is a large mass with regular rectangular windows across the frontages. It's also fronted by a low, single story pedestal facing towards Queens Boulevard. Next slide. Vertical facade elements are taken from the Borough Hall with its vertical portico and also those insets that I mentioned that are part of the wings extending out from Borough Hall, vertical cast stone or stone elements that are at the end wings of the building, also incorporated into the Helen Marshall Cultural Center with that infill that completed about three or four years ago. Those vertical elements are taken as part of the the design aesthetic. Next slide, please. Horizontal elements are integrated onto the facade as well. This view looking from the avenue and from the highway, seeing the extension of the courthouse with its long horizontal bands and its glass cladding of the extension. Next slide, please. And also for the original courthouse building, the that regularity of windows, rectangular window openings across the multiple upper floors of the building as well. Another design element incorporated into our approach for the garage. Next slide. For selected design references, some of the other facilities, community facilities, we've looked at across the country. The top left hand side in Seattle and overhead PV array, which will see some images incorporated into the building. Horizontal elements that are incorporated into this parking garage developed in in New Orleans and also on the right hand side, a vertical, excuse me, a vertical horizontal planted roof as part of a second story level at this community space. Next slide, please. I'll quickly go through the the elevations of the building and the facades. In this west elevation facing one hundred and twenty sixth street, we can see the community space in the foreground. The body of the garage is seen beyond with its vertical concrete glass circulation core on on the right hand side. The community space is clad with glazing and vertical precast panels with a texturing that's dense upon the panels in the foreground at a at a tactility that's visible and closer to the pedestrian scale. The garage is clad with horizontal metal fins that are a little more open and less dense and stale, scale more appropriate to the size of the building. And the uppermost element of the composition is that is a steel trellis which carries a photovoltaic array. This also sets the overall upper height of the building as well. Next slide, please. At the north facade, there's three key elements that can be seen. The community space with its windows and densely textured panels is on the right hand side. The garage and its loosely spaced horizontal metal fins is in the center of the view. There is a circulation core for egress. It's in the middle of the composition at the higher portion of the building. And on the left hand side is a structural sheer wall, which actually has penetrations through it in regular rectangular openings, allowing ventilation through the garage and also recalling the courthouse. Also, at the top of the building, again, is that photovoltaic array, which sets up the highest point of the building. That elevation is set at one hundred and forty seven feet in height. That is just below the hundred and five foot setback requirement for the zoning envelope. And that elevation is also set, allowing just enough clearance for vehicles to be parking at that uppermost level that you see at the center of the of the composition. Next slide, please. At the east elevation facing one hundred and thirty At the east elevation facing 132nd Street or towards the expressway, those vertical sheer walls are actually bookends. Go back one slide, please. Thank you. Those vertical sheer walls are actually bookends that are framing the composition of the facade with the sloped decks of parking and the horizontal metals fins are screening that element. Next slide, please. Thank you. On the south facade, which is actually facing towards the buffer, a combination of elements with the garage on the right-hand side and its two treatments between the regular openings for ventilation, the horizontal metal fins on the parking decks themselves. In the middle of the composition can be seen the vertical circulation core with elevators and stairs giving access to all levels of the garage. And on the left-hand side, the community space, which extends from that plaza and 126th Street with multiple entry points into the community space and into the garage itself. Also can be seen the grading intent with it extending across at approximately a 50-foot, 56-foot elevation from 126th Street to about the midpoint of the buffer and then sloping downwards and intersecting with 132nd Street on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. A rendering scene from the west is the primary view seen from the park and from the green space behind Borough Hall. The plaza is a connector for multiple points of entry into the building, either directly from the street and 126th Street into the community space with that view just left of the main staircase. Entry is going into the community space from the plaza and also the entry into the garage beyond. The intent is for an activated pedestrian connector that's a part of the overall experience. Community spaces' window openings are actually continuing on three sides. Here we can see them on two sides facing out towards the buffer space and 126th Street. All three sides of the second floor of the building actually create over 320 linear feet of exposure for that second-level community space, which is actually quite a nice space. There's a continual interplay of scale with this building as well and the aesthetics of the building between the lower-scale community space and the larger garage structure. Denser patterning and texture is present upon the panels of the community space, but also the community space is open, it's glazed, giving light daylight coming into the space and views out from the interior. Again, the project is intended as a prompt for future improvement to the municipal district as well, even beyond this project's limits, which includes the park space, the streetscape, the crossings, and actually a 30-foot buffer itself that will be developed as part of a future phase of work with the adjacent building. Next slide, please. This rendering is seen from the east side, from passing by on the Van Wick Expressway. It's one of the most prominent facades. It's the tallest facade facing out towards the highway. The garage entry can be seen on the lower-left-hand side coming in from 132nd Street, and the treatment of horizontal elements extends across from the facade, bookended by the vertical sheer walls at either end, which are clad with a precast concrete finish, and the PV array tops the entire composition. Next slide, please. A view seeing the public entryway from the south in the activation of the plaza is what's key with this and the activation of that buffer. And this plaza is tended as a crossover between multiple components, between the community space, the parking, the pedestrian connection, and the streetscape. Not treating anyone in isolation, but allowing those moments to occur within that space and interaction between those locations. Next image, please. There is connection directly from that staircase that leads up to the second-level terrace, which connects directly into the garage itself, and also a staircase that extends up to an upper level of the garage as well, providing multiple opportunities for active movement rather than taking the stairs inside of the elevator down a level, actually stepping outside, engaging with the outdoors, and walking out to your destination within the Queens Municipal District. Next slide, please. And the viewpoint seen from exiting the garage, looking out over that terrace space at the second level, the trees that are in the background are actually the park space that's behind Borough Hall. It's an opportunity to engage and move outdoors and engage with the community space and understand the offerings that may be there from the tenant that's present. Next slide, please. A perspective view seen at dusk from the northeast, or excuse me, the northwest area of the site. We can see the setback of the community space and its planted roof. It's a green roof continuous with a lower planting at the middle of the main roof body and around the perimeter, there's a denser, lusher planting that forms the top of the building esteem from the street level. We can also see the garage itself and that photovoltaic array with the illumination of it. We're also integrating lighting into the facade, integrated with the horizontal fins of the parking garage itself and also selected lighting elements that are integrated with the facade of the community space also. Again, using LED fixtures throughout and also using appropriate fixtures in terms of dark sky compliance and light spill onto adjacent facades and onto the streets. Next slide, please. Overall, the project is targeting a lead accreditation as well. Overall, we're targeting a lead gold status for the project focused upon energy use, rainwater harvesting, and material selection. We think that the photovoltaic array, we're working with contractors now to be able to size that system and determine the actual power output. We may be close to a net-zero operation for the parking garage itself in terms of electrical use. Next slide, please. The project is also pursuing a ParkSmart certification, which deals with parking operations and usage for parking facilities. This will actually be probably the first ParkSmart certification within New York City and the third within New York State. Next slide. Thank you for your time, and I'd like to pass it to GDC again and Rebecca to comment on some next steps for the project.
Okay, next slide, please. The Queens Garage and Community Space, we're very pleased to say, has received their billing permits and they're erecting construction fences this week, restriping the parking lot for the area that will be cordoned off for construction for the garage itself. They also will be bringing in the construction trailers next week and will be moving forward great guns. By then, we're working together with the designers to further refine and develop and refine the documents, the design, as well as interacting with the Public Design Commission for additional refinements. Citywide or the program-wide, the Queens Facility Design Guidelines and Principles, the pre-RFP will be completed in June of 2021, and the Bronx Facility Design Guidelines and Principles were anticipated to be complete in August of this year. Next. And that's really, next slide, I think that's the end of our presentation today. As you, this is just some other information. If we support questions, if you have any. So I'd be happy to answer anything you'd like to ask. Thank you.
Thank you to the team. And now we'll turn it over to the commission for questions, and I see that Commissioner Capelli.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Aside and apart from the actual parking garage, what steps are being taken to ensure that people with disabilities are able to access the community facility?
I'm not sure. I understand your question. You mean that the community facility, Scott, you want to take that one?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer that. The community facility, it does have an entrance directly from 126th Street, both from the sidewalk and from the side entry coming in at the plaza space, so that's direct access. The community facility does have an elevator inside of it, so just inside of those doors, there is an elevator that accesses to the second floor and gives access out to the terrace. And the garage itself has its own elevator core as well, with two elevators that serves all floors.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Way back in the 20th century, when DDC was a part of the ODGS, we built the criminal court extension. So it's a, it makes me nostalgic to look at that area. With regard to the community facility space, which is obviously going to be a key component to this whole design, and I guess this is for DDC and perhaps DCAST, what is the criteria that you're establishing for designating a tenant for the community facility? Will they be a single tenant that will occupy the entire facility? What do you envision with regard to that community facility space?
The community facility space has not been programmed. The City Hall, together with the Microsoft Criminal Justice, is working with the first, the Deputy of Operation Anglin's office to help determine what that use should be. All we've done is to make sure that what Scott and his team have created is allows for the widest possible opportunities we've considered, or they are actively considering that there may be two tenants, there may be one tenant, and that the building will be generic enough and the space will be generic enough that they can be tailored to whoever or whatever uses is introduced there. But that's not a DDC function. That's for City Hall and Mockjay.
What is the approximate square footage of the community facility space at this point?
25,000 gross square feet. Scott, do you have a more specific number?
That's correct. 25,000 is the target. We may be a little bit over that now. We're actually finalizing our calculations for the zoning takeoffs and such now as we complete our documents. But 25,000 gross is the minimum requirement. We're just over that number, actually.
So again, Commissioner, as far as you know, there is no criteria that's been established for the designation of the community facility occupant?
No, I believe that they're looking for the community at large to help identify what the highest and best use would be.
Okay. I noticed Thornton Thomas said he was a part of the architectural team.
That's correct.
Just refresh me. What is their function in this?
They're the structural engineers for the project, and they've also been leading for the parking garage design as well in terms of access controls, sizing for circulation, the vehicles themselves, et cetera.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rong Kishat.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Vice Chair Knuckles asked one of the questions I had, which is regards to the community center. I have a question. Will the green roof be accessible all year long, weekends included?
Yeah, the green roof will not be accessible for several reasons. Most importantly, security. We're concerned that it's not a visible space, highly visible space, except from inside the garage. We don't want things going on up there that can't be observed, as well as the loading requirements for an active roof space are higher and don't really work into the whole scheme of the project.
Okay, a couple more quick questions. I was actually surprised that you're breaking ground. I guess you're breaking ground this week. Or when will you be installing, I guess, foundations and commencing construction on the physical garage? Because I understand you're going to be prepping the site at this point. How long would that take?
Scott, could you or Joshua handle that question?
Sure.
Josh, thank you.
We are still, we're still waiting for our foundation permit process to be completed, but our hope is to start real excavation work midsummer.
Midsummer, okay. And one last question with regards to the parking garage. I understand you're going to go for ParkSmart. How many spaces will be allocated for electrical vehicles?
Electric vehicles, day one will have spaces allocated for, I believe, we're at 31 electric vehicles, and we have infrastructure for another 90 going into place.
And there's 676 proposed parking spots?
Minimum 600 is the current program requirement.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Byrne.
You know, I think Nadine was going to answer the question about the tenant for the community space, so maybe she should do that before I ask my question.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to echo Rebecca's comments that we are working with the community to determine the best use for the community facility space. That space is designated as a community facility space, not for retail, so just to underscore that. And currently, it is under DOT management, but once we know exactly who, you know, the use of the space, the community facility space, the city is going to do an RFP and then we will designate the proper operator for the space. So those are the steps that we're taking.
Okay. Right. Thanks, Nadine. Thank you, Rebecca and team. Good to see you, Rebecca. It's been a while.
Yes, you too. Didn't recognize you quite enough.
Well, you know, it's COVID time, so. So my first question is, you're starting construction. I wonder, what was the rationale for proceeding so quickly with the parking structure without a design for the jail? These two buildings are going to live together for a very long time, and I wonder what the rationale is there. And second of all, is it the same design team for the jail or is it a different team?
The main reason we pulled the garage ahead is because there's an extreme lack of parking in the neighborhood, and we did not want to further inconvenience the population by taking away what little parking there was. So we thought by providing the 600 spaces, it would provide an amenity to the community while the remainder of the area was torn up for the next five years, as well as I need to, once I have the parking out of the way, then I need to move a water main and start the excavation for the facility. The facility, we have out right now a request for qualifications. We're hoping that we have a team that will be sensitive to what's happening with the garage as well as integrating the building into the existing fabric. But we felt that the buffer and the facility could be handled separately from the garage without an issue. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but I think so.
Well, I guess so. I mean, I don't know that I necessarily would agree. I think it might have been preferable to at least have had the design process along the same track so that one, they would be better integrated. But, you know, that's water over the, under the bridge, I guess. But my other quick question is, and I was trying to follow closely, went very quickly, the slides on the design of the structure. And, you know, I commend Scott and his team. I mean, I think parking garages are a very difficult typology for architects. They can be very dull, and I think some of the use of the materials, you know, the difficulty is compounded by the fact that you have to allow so much ventilation to avoid having to do mechanical ventilation. So I think in general, I like the treatment and the approach they've taken. But I did notice one little line on one of the slides, and it said vinyl-coated chain link. And I'd love to see that eliminated. Can we not have vinyl-coated chain link on such a nice new facility?
Let me comment on that quickly. The only location that that's occurring, it's at the lower level of the facility. It's actually inboard on the inside of the parking structure, actually set back behind the structure of the precast so that the facility can be closed at night or during off hours. So it's not a primary part of the facade. It's actually recessed back and behind.
Okay, so I feel better. Okay, thank you, Scott.
Nadine, I see you have your hand up again, or is that just leftover?
That was leftover. Apologies.
Thanks. I didn't want to overlook you. Again, our next up is Commissioner Mudding.
Good morning. Thank you. I have two questions. One is pretty obvious from the drawings you show and from the different design suggestions that you got from other projects. There's these two huge stairs going up to the two pairs of public landings at the courthouse. While I don't see any mobility impaired type of accessibility, I'm sure that comes planned. Can you talk about that and where those access points may be?
Sure. The Sure, um, the access points for accessibility would be with either within the community space as I mentioned. Cause there is a, an elevator that accesses to the two levels of the community space, you'd be going inside. Also directly at the, at the head of those stairs within the vertical circulation core of the garage are two elevators. That feed out to those terraces or go all the way down to the ground level. So those are the access points, uh, from grade up to the terraces or into the levels of the garage.
Sure, and then, and then that leads to my second question regarding pedestrians and that is the, you know, we do know that the, the Grand Central Parkway. And, uh, the avenue, the, the access point into the parking garage is going to be very busy, very active. What type of pedestrian controls across things, across walks are we providing for? Knowing that there's open space across the street, undoubtedly there'll be children, um, crossing over into the community facility space. What type of controls are we putting there for, um, safety?
The controls that are part of the, the facility, um, first off, I'll, I'll start with an overview statement. We've tried to separate the pedestrian circulation from, uh, the parking entries as much as possible by focusing on that. Plaza space and actually putting all of those entry points at opposite corners from one another or distinct corners from one another. To, to limit any, any interaction from the, the larger populations that we passing by or passing through or, or going into the facility. In terms of access across the entry points coming into the garage. It's, it's a sidewalk that's there with a, with a drop curb, uh, to allow the vehicles to enter, so it's kind of a standard, uh, drop curb scenario that's there. Um, and we don't have as part of this project, uh, additional crossings considered as part of the, the corner intersections or mid block crossing. But that's something that could be considered in the future in coordination with, with DOT or, or other agencies.
I, I specifically think that maybe some, you know, I've seen these, and I know they probably take this into consideration where the, whereas pedestrians have. The right to start crossing before the cars start turning, so that this way cars do acknowledge that pedestrians in the crosswalk, so. Some signal light type of devices or something for the pedestrian sake, it would, consideration would be great, appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioner, Commissioner Rumpershot.
Yeah, uh, two questions in regards to one twenty sixth street and one thirty second street, when you do commence construction. How will the current parking situation be affected there? Right now, I understand, I believe. The, the correct, not correction, I think maybe the criminal court uses it or the police department is using that for parking. Is that going to be eliminated during construction here? How's that going to be affected and one thirty second street, is that going to be two way? Cause if I remember seeing on one of the renderings, I believe I see cars and I know it's illustrious, but I see traffic in two directions there. So if you just please confirm that.
Sure, the, so first off, the, um, uh, as, as Scott stated, so the, the. Our first order of business is maintaining the hundred and, a hundred and forty spaces in the, in the public parking lot on the south end of the site. With respect to the placarded spaces that are essentially wrapped the perimeter of our site on a hundred and twenty six Union Turnpike and a hundred and thirty second. We are working with the DOT very closely to try to maintain as many of those spots as possible. I can't tell you precise number right at the moment, but we can certainly get back to you with it. It is a, it is a coordination, the DOT is working with us very closely. We're sensitive to it, we are going to have some of those spaces will be taken during, at certain points during construction, particularly. When we're erecting the precast structure for the garage. But we're trying to maintain as many placarded spaces as possible.
Okay, and one last question with regards to community engagement. I guess you guys will be given updates to the local civics, community boards. How's that work? Do you give them like a monthly update? How's that gonna work from here on out?
Well, we have a, our Office of, um, Construction Community Outreach, uh, will have a trailer on site. To respond to any questions from the community. We are also working with Borough President's Office, uh, the Court Administration to make sure they're aware of what's coming up. And then periodic, uh, reports to the various oversights as well.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Uh, yes, thank you, um, I have, uh. The role, the role of pedestrian in making this a successful facility is, is I think really important. And you've got arrows showing people going all kinds of different directions as they, um, you know, go back and forth across, um, hundred and twenty sixth street. Eventually going back and forth to the, um, new facility. But I don't see any indication in the plans about safe crossings, which Commissioner Marine has, um, referred to. Landscaping of that, what you're calling the buffer space, but really is the public plaza, I think is going to be really important. And what I'm kind of hearing is that there are different pieces of the city responsible for different parts of this. And it's not DDC's concern and we're building the garage. Um, I think there needs to be much better coordination of, um, the public experience here. So that we don't just have blank concrete walls, um, where everyone aspires to have something nice, but it's not their responsibility. So it's not being planned for.
If I could, uh, address that, um, the buffer, um, is. In the short term, part of the construction operations, but we are going to be installing a forty eight inch trunk water main in the buffer.
Okay.
So that, that the garage will be up and operating prior to the trunk water main being completed. But then that buffer will become part of the facility site and that, uh, architect team will be charged with. Wrapping the whole thing up into one package, you might say, with, we see in the long run that. Buffer will become the primary access point from the Briarwood community through to, uh, Queens Boulevard. And, uh, it's a nice seating area, I mean, Scott and his team have put together a very nice presentation of. The possibilities for that buffer, um, we have restrictions from the Department of Environmental Protection. On what can be built on top of the water main itself in terms of structures, it, it, nothing essentially. However, we are working with them to come up with a palette of materials and, um. Sculpting, et cetera, uh, to enhance that buffer as much as possible. To become a community space as well as a transition, um, or connection connector to the Queens Boulevard area.
That, that's helpful, I think it may, it may be helpful to start calling it a, a plaza rather than a buffer, a buffer makes it sound like it's leftover. And I think from the public standpoint, this, this is like a central artery or should be designed to be a central artery and feel like that, so. And I realize you don't want to put design details out too early and you get people attached to something that can't be built. But I think demonstrating, uh, intention on the part of the city through whatever agency. That this is going to be attractive publics and usable public space will be important to the success of this.
Right, yeah.
I'd, I'd apply, then I, I would turn around the corner and ask about the hundred and twenty sixth street facade of the, um, building. That also looks like kind of a concrete wall. Choosing, uh, you know, knowing what kind of use is going into the community facility would just take us a very long way toward, um. Confidence that that building will be activated in a way that is, um, desirable, both in terms of the use. And in terms of its interface with the public realm, so, um. But in the meantime, what can be done to, to, to soften or landscape or, you know, humanize? The hundred and tw- twenty sixth street facade of the community facility space.
We're, we're reviewing, we're continuing to review and, and finalize the facade elements as we're working through this with the construction team and Hunter Roberts. So we're continuing to develop that facade, I mean, again, part of our strategy overall with the community space, not knowing what tenant is there. Is trying to give as much flexibility as possible for who might come in, be it a standalone tenant, multiple tenants, a kitchen space potentially, something like that. That's part of the strategy for separating it out as its own independent building, it has its own roof, if there needs to be additional mechanicals, things like that. Um, and also making that connection to a hundred and twenty sixth street and setting that ground plan and making it as accessible as, as possible. But, but we're continuing to review what could happen at that lower level of the facade and also with the streetscape component as well, whether that's part of our project. Or something that comes in the future as part of the, um, uh, the bigger, uh, public access realm.
Yeah.
Around the entirety of the block.
Good, well, thank you, I guess, you know, I guess I've made my point all too well is, um, we, the, the, the public aspects of this shouldn't be an afterthought. Or please say, you, you know, your mandate is to design the garage, but we got to be sure that somebody's mandate is to, um, knit this all together in a way that is. Appealing to the public.
Yeah, yes, that, that is, um, reserved for the facility contractor or their design build team. Because of the mass of the, of the facility and all the different parameters they have to meet. To make their building work, we wanted to give them the largest, uh, widest opportunity of how to access that buffer. I could see the building being set more towards Hoover and a hundred and thirty first. And creating a much larger, uh, plaza in that, that combines the front of the facility. Together with the garage and, and pulls the buffer connector area in altogether. So I think when we're done, it'll be a really nice, um, uh, campus as a whole, so.
Yeah, it certainly has the bones for that, thank you.
Yes, yes.
Oh, I want to thank the commissioners for the comments because when you ask who views themselves as. Caring passionately about the pedestrian realm, that's the Department of City Planning and we have been involved, we have not been shy about commenting. And hearing the, the expert input of the commission helps us markedly. I'm heartened by the fact that we will soon, uh, that one of the next steps, one of the next presentations to the commission will be for the Queens facility. Itself and we will certainly take on board the comments, the questions of the commission and incorporate it into our feedback. And I would hope that when DDC, um, makes the presentation on the Queens Garage, we can get. More information about the issues that the commission has raised here. At my peril, I disagree with Commissioner Levin, but I do have to note that while we agree that. The, uh, plaza is a much better term than a buffer. One cannot have lived in the city of Boston as long as I have without shuddering at the notion that it would be a central artery.
Yeah, it will not be an artery, that's for sure.
Point well taken. Inviting to pedestrians.
Right, um, the, I have one other question, which is it was mentioned that this would be the first park smart. Project in the city, but that there were two in the state, could you let us know what they are just so we get a, a, a sense? Uh, for those not as familiar with Park Smart.
Sure, they're, they're both, um, admit, I don't know the names of them offhand, one of them is in Albany and I want to say the other one is in Rochester. I could be wrong, but we could, we can get back with you with the specifics of the, of the project names, I just don't recall them offhand.
Okay, that would be helpful, thank you. And other questions from the commission? Well, I want to thank the, um, the project team for a comprehensive presentation. And especially the commissioners for, um, giving those of us in the department working on this. Yet, yet more issues to consider and continue advocating for as this project, um, develops. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you, Chi, I just wanted to, uh, I assume that we will be briefed, uh, as this. Project continues to evolve, especially around the, uh, the question of who will occupy, uh, the community facility space. As well as the, uh, hopefully continuing evolution of the landscaping around the entire complex.
Yes, our, the, the commitment was to have very specified briefings with respect to projects. And then other briefings as the commission will want, and so as there are significant developments, as we get information about the excellent questions. Posed by the commission, we will schedule additional briefings. And with that, I will thank, again, thank the project team for the presentation. And I believe that, that is all the business that is before us, is, is that right Edward?
Uh, that's correct, Chiralago, we're done today.
Great.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate your time.
Margarita's advice, Chair Knuckles later.
See you there, bye.